All right, good evening ladies and gentlemen. We mark the time at 5:30. I'd like to welcome you to the recess meeting of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by an invocation from Chaplain Genesee, and then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you pray with me? Gracious God, we come to you tonight with so many things on our hearts, and you are the one that we come to because you rule over all, and we ask you to be with those who rule over us tonight. We're grateful for the opportunity you have to be in this city for the blessings you give us day in and day out, and we ask that you bless those who leave. We pray for our mayor, for those who represent us on the Board of Aldermen, for all those in our city who serve us day in and day out. We ask that you strengthen them and give them wisdom. In our discussions tonight, may we feel your presence with us, that all that we do will bring you honor, and that what we do will be done for the hope and the good of all the citizens that we surround ourselves with as neighbors and friends. We ask this in the name of the sake of us.
Thank you all for being here this evening. We appreciate your attendance. We will now look at the official agenda with consented agenda items. Do I have any changes from the board members? Vice Mayor Perkins, I see your hand.
Yes ma'am, Mayor. I'd like for one item to be removed from the consent agenda, and it is on page three of the agenda that is at my place is the subject heading is Engineering.
Yes, sir.
Alphabet D, number three.
Okay.
If you just remove that from the consent, please.
The change order for the Lynn Lane widening project. All right, we'll show that is removed from the consent agenda. All right, any other changes, Vice Mayor?
I yield the floor, Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other changes from the board members? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the official agenda with the consented items as modified.
I have a motion from Alderman Little. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Carver. No further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, next item is for me to read the consented agenda items, and I will do that at this point in time. First item is consideration of the minutes of the May 3, 2019, meeting of the mayor and the Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. Under planning, we have consideration to advertise to fill Ward III position on the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term of six years that will become vacant on June 30, 2019. Under courts, we have request permission to allow court clerk Jody Hoag to attend the Municipal Court Summer Training Program in Biloxi, Mississippi from June 24, 2019 through June 25, 2019, with advanced registration travel and a hotel not to exceed $600. Under engineering, we have consideration of renewing the ditch spraying contract with Kimpro, the lower quote, based on their 2018 proposal, which offered a one-year extension option. Number four is consideration of approval to select Garver Engineering as the consultant for the linkage tap project using MDOT small purchase procedure. Authorize the mayor to negotiate and sign an engineering services contract and execute any necessary MDOT paperwork for this project in accordance with the MDOT Local Public Agencies LPA Manual. Under finance and administration, we have consideration of acceptance of the April financial statements. Consideration of property insurance renewal per prior year agreement, which offered a one-year extension option with Renasant Insurance for property, vehicle, and equipment insurance services. Under human resources, we have request authorization to advertise for two part-time aircraft linemen, FBO, in the Starkville Airport Department. Number two is request authorization to advertise for temporary full-time driver in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Number three is request authorization to advertise for a temporary full-time deputy court clerk in the Municipal Court Department. Four is request authorization to advertise for three maintenance workers in the Starkville Utilities Department. Five is request authorization to hire Vannetta Holmes as the deputy court clerk in the Municipal Court Department. Six, request authorization to hire Daisy Wiggins as a part-time receptionist in the Starkville Parks and Recreation Department. Seven is request authorization to advertise for an equipment operator in the Starkville Utilities Department. Eight is request authorization to advertise for a training chief in the Starkville Fire Department. Nine is request authorization to hire Zaking Hawkins and Preston Newman as entry-level firefighters in the Starkville Fire Department. Ten is request authorization to advertise for a facilities and ground supervisor in the Starkville Park and Recreation Department. Eleven is request authorization to advertise for one seasonal maintenance worker in the Starkville Parks and Recreation Department. Under parks, we have one consideration of the approval of the facility use agreement with the Shockwave Aquatic Club for use of the Mon Creek Pool for swim team practices. Two is consideration to authorize to purchase three temporary baseball pitching mounds from Richardson Athletics in the amount of $9,906.66, the lower of two quotes to be used for baseball practices and tournament play. Three is consideration authorized high-tech athletic services to resurface one basketball court at McKee Park, two basketball courts at JL King Senior Memorial Park, three tennis courts at McKee Park, and to resurface and convert one tennis court at McKee Park to four pickleball courts for a cost of $43,900, the lowest quote. Under police department, we have request authorization to allow Officer Angelica Colbert to attend the 2019 Dare Conference in Biloxi, Mississippi, July 15 through the 19, 2019, with advanced registration and hotel costs not to exceed $700. We have request authorization to allow Sergeant Brandon Lovelady, Sergeant Chad Williams, Sergeant Brooke Carpenter, and Sergeant John Michael Lay to attend Mississippi Command College in Oxford, Mississippi, July 28 through August 2 of 2019, with advanced registration and hotel costs not to exceed $3,500. Number three is request authorization for Officer Dylan Bowers and Will Simon to attend the motorcycle training in DeIbraville, Mississippi, on June 9 through the 14, 2019. Number four is request authorization for approval for Calea, the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies Assessment, costs of up to $500. Under utilities department, number one is request approval to purchase a Canon CR-190 check scanner in the amount of $22,495 from Milner Technologies as a sole source bid, in that it is the only company that can provide an OCR scanner and corresponding software that is fully compatible with SEDC multi-service customer accounting software. Two is request approval from the lowest bid in the amount of $103,449 from Donald Smith Company without the deductive alternative and to proceed with the Bluefield projects as recommended by Garver Engineering. Three is request approval for Madison Smith with the Electric Division of Starkville Utilities to attend the line design and staking four class, June 11 through 13, 2019, at costs not to exceed $2,113.75. Number four is request authorization to advertise for source of supply bids for the Electrical and Water Divisions of Starkville Utilities with the intent of awarding the source of supply contracts for the July 1, 2019, through December 31, 2019 period. And that concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're most welcome, Alderman Vaughn. All right, and then we have, we go on to announcements and comments, and for the mayor, I would like to provide several things that are going on in town. Tomorrow night, we'll be having sun, I'm sorry, that's incorrect. Thursday night, we'll be having downtown at sundown from 7 to 9. It'll be occurring in Fire Station Park. This is the first in the summer series that happens put on by the Greater Starkville Development Partnership. Music, bring your blankets, your coolers, your lawn chairs, and go enjoy some free entertainment and free music. We also have, earlier that same day, NAACP is putting on a park support group at Westside Park from 4 to 7, and they will be offering the opportunity to talk about the parks and to visit with the neighbors about the parks, so if anyone wants to go learn more that, much like the forum that we had a couple of weeks ago about the Park Initiative. And then also this weekend, we have a soccer tournament, which is, let's see, they have their team check-ins on Friday, so they'll be in town starting Friday, and there are 40 teams, which is 400 players, which equates to about 1,000, 1,500 people who will be in town this weekend. So, that's one of those fun things that we get to welcome people into Starkville and introduce them to our favorite place, my favorite place, certainly. And I believe that about covers everything I have. Does the board members have anything they'd like to mention?
Let me recognize you. I'd like to say good evening to my help and the father, the one that does everything well, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ and the Holy Spirit. I'd like to say good evening to them first, and to you, Mayor Spruill, to Vice Mayor Perkins, to Alderman Vaughn, and to the Aldermans and the rest of the audience, I'd like to say good evening to you. I think back about 2009 when I first became an Alderman. When I put my right hand on the Bible, I took the oath of upholding the state of Mississippi. I promised that we were going to be fair. We said we're gonna be just and do the right thing for all citizens of Starkville, regardless of race, color, sex, origin, or creed. Somehow that has changed from us. We continue to have meetings before the meetings, which I don't like, and have made in 2009 my first term that I was going to uphold the law. I would not take brides, nor was I going to tell how or who to vote for. I always have tried to make everyone, and my decision to satisfy God and my Lord and Savior, I still mean that to the day. This is my third term. The budget, the budget chair, this budget's supposed to be the mayor, the board, but it's not. It belongs to the mayor and the budget chair and the clique. All you have to do is just look around in every ward, at the streets and the other wards, at the infrastructure, the drainage, and so on. All you have to do is just look. There's an exation. I have asked, been asked by my constituents and some of the public, why, why is there urgent for this project? Why is there urgency? And the only thing I tell them, when it's abdawned, it's gonna be some redistricting. We know this all about drawing the line to make the wars unequal, to make the five first fire wars strong, and make the last six and seven make them weak. The industrial park, we keep on talking about raising monies, revenue, revenue, revenue. I can't understand why we can't wait till the industrial park is completed, and then we can get revenue from the industrial park to support this city, instead of keep imposing taxes, taxes here, taxes there, increased taxes here, taxes there. And again, the baseball park, why it was in urgent for this baseball park when we can just upgrade the parks that we got, the present park? We can redesign and get these parks up to standard, and we're not need the multimillion-dollar park that will not benefit the majority of the people, nor will it the taxpayer than the citizen. That park will not, will not benefit all these peoples, because the minorities in the African-American community, the ratio is 10%, and the coaches is less than that. How will it benefit of alls? Professional baseball in the minority in African-American is not but 8%. That's all in there, so you know what it's gonna be if we get a multimillion-dollar park. These prices keep going up for the young black kids, $85 to enter, for little ones, counting and traveling, which did have one or three players, not no black coach nowhere. How is this park gonna benefit our neighborhood and our African-Americans? Segregation, seem like we're being trying to be segregated and put back. This is segregating us enough and enough. This is going on now while we continue to put the wall between us instead of building a bridge. We pulling a wall between the black and white instead of building a bridge. We don't need a bridge between of us, because these children are gonna be children. The children don't even know color between them. It's us the one that making the color between them. We do not see color that is doing this. Fire station, number four, we want to put a new park when you got parks everywhere, all around. You separated the fireworks. You got fireworks in two different places, at a country club that can't nobody go but the, nobody but the club members. And then here we come now, Stonewater. I've been crying about Stonewater for five and six years, and all of a sudden now, I'm not, I'm disappointed with the mayor, disappointed with the board, but I'm still kinda glad, because after things happened down South Montgomery, now we wanna do something about Stonewater, when we should have did this all the time, while we've been, while we've been worrying and trying to get this Stonewater under control. But now, after something that happened down South Montgomery that need housing, now we finna get something done. Guns and shooting in our community. I guess when it started happening down South Montgomery, then we'll do something about it. Some of these tax money, some of this money, we need to take it and try to find out where is all these guns coming from in our community? Why are all these kids being shot in our community? I guess it don't matter, but once these guns end up down South Montgomery, we'll do something about it. Some of this, some of this, this revenue you keep talking about, what about all these labradated infrastructures that in the ground? We need to do something about that, but we still took a $71,000, bought it more when we could have did something else different. It's so much that we could have done that we're not doing. They are so concerned about revenue. One of them, one of my constituents said, if it were left up to you and the board, they'll put a casino on Main Street, and I feel that way too, just as they said it. I feel the same way, because the only thing we think about is revenue. Taking more from the poor and still doing what you want to do with the tax dollars. Live, and we got to realize, we don't live in Oxford, we don't live in Tuba Low, we don't live in Ridgeland, we don't live in no other city. There are no other municipalities. This is Starve where I live and where I was born for 66 years, and I'm very proud to live here in Starve here. I don't care what they do in Oxford, I don't care what they do in Ridgeland, I don't care what they do in no municipality. We can't follow every municipality, try to make it starve. That's not gonna work. We say, we say, when we get to with the, with the President looking through the flag, we say, in God we trust, with liberty and justice for all. We say that over and over and over. I be so glad when we start meaning in it. Just don't be saying we're liberty and justice for all. Let's mean that and do something about it. You say about the quality of life, the quality of life. Do you mean that for everybody, or just something that we just say? If a shift is coming in this city, and it will not be the mayor way, it will be God's way. If a shift coming in this city, it will not be the board way, it will be Jesus' way. If a shift coming in this city, it will not be our way, it will be the Holy Spirit's way. You can fool some people all the time. You can fool some people some of the time, and some people you cannot fool no time. We just deal with it until God fix it. I hope we change, and I hope we go back to what we took this oath on when we first became Aldermen. Do the right thing for everybody, because what we're doing now is not fair and is injustice to this city. Thank you for the time, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Vaughn?
I would just like to remind everyone publicly that May 30, we are going to have the election for the vacated seat for Ward Five, and absentee ballots are available now, eight to five here at the City Clerk's Office. And absentee Saturday also, from eight till noon, this is the last Saturday opportunity. If someone's gonna be out of town, it is Memorial Day week, so there may be some traveling. Also, that's your opportunity to go vote in the 1% referendum, for or against. If we don't get the 60%, we will not have, we will not move forward with the parks project. So, the voters of the City of Starkville control our destiny. If there's something we want, if there's something you don't want, you'll have a say, and everyone's gonna have a voice that gets out and votes on that. I, for one, I'm going to support it. I've been supported the whole time. I feel like it's a good thing. My kids missed the opportunity. I don't have any kids who are gonna be utilizing those parks now. They've all grown up and, but I've traveled around and played soccer, watched my kids play soccer. They weren't baseball people, albeit that's what I grew up playing and loved it, but they did not take to that, and they played soccer and ran, so. I've traveled all over the state with soccer tournaments, and outside of the state as well, and had park envy. Why don't we have something like this? Well, here's our opportunity, if we choose to do it, and I hope everyone will get out and vote. If you want to be out of town, go vote absentee. And I welcome my friends and neighbors and constituents from Ward Three tonight. You're welcome here anytime, as I told several of you earlier. If you're bored, don't have anything to do, and can come and bring popcorn on occasion. But I would say that I welcome Ms. Dodd. I see that you went through the process and filled out the form and the application to come publicly and speak as a public appearance, which is allowed under, under our, you know, rules up here, and you've abided by that, and I welcome you and anybody else. I've sit here over the years, and I've heard people from other wards and listened to them, and just because you live on South Montgomery doesn't mean you don't have that right.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, welcome, everybody. I agree with Alderman Little, and I wanted to say, I encourage everybody to come out the 30th and vote for, if you live in Ward Five, to vote for whoever your Alderman's gonna be, and if you just live in the City of Starkville, to come out and vote either in support or against the parks referendum. I believe that Alderman Vaughn brought up several good points, of which I don't see this park as being something that would be intentionally trying to divide or separate people out, quite, quite the opposite. And I believe that his statistic is correct in terms of the amount of players that are African-American that currently play in Major League Baseball. And I know that Major League Baseball sees that as a real challenge as well, and they've done, over the last several years, they've made major strides in the inner city, especially to try to bring back the African-American community into the great sport of baseball. So I know that there's a great opportunity for that, and I see that as a great opportunity in Starkville as well, to have all kids play all sports. There's been lots of discussion out there about why should we do, why should we spend the money for this choice tax? When I say choice tax, it's not property tax, it's not sent to everybody equally. This is a choice. You have a choice to go to a restaurant and eat or buy food and buy beverage. That's the only time you would pay this tax, is if you choose to eat out in an establishment. So first of all, you have a choice. The second thing I've heard is, why would we want to have this taxes raised to build a park when we can't take care of our infrastructure? We need to fill, we need to build more, take care of our roads, we need to take care of our drainage. No doubt about it, that is absolutely correct as well. All of those infrastructure, like Alderman Vaughn alluded to, take revenue. We have to have revenue to be able to fix that. I will say that this board in particular, if you look at what has been planned and what has happened over the last two years, we are spending approximately a million dollars a year on streets resurfacing. There will be another million dollars spent this summer, there'll be approximately another million then a year after that, and the year after that. At that point, we're going to start have a state mandated by legislative action, a use diversion tax. At that point, we're gonna be getting a little bit more money that's coming our way that's being diverted from the state sales tax, from the internet sales. At that point, we should be hopefully being able to, on a continuous basis, being able to resurface about a million dollars a year, which equates right now to about five miles a road per year. That's an actual plan, a plan for moving forward for how you keep up and make sure that our streets are going to be taken care of. There have been a lot of people over the years that have sat in these seats, that have tried to find a way to make sure that we take care of the infrastructure. And the common denominator, that no matter where you stand on this, the common denominator for that is, how are we going to pay for it? And the best way to pay for that is, we only have two ways, sales tax or property taxes. And over the years, there has been resistance, and I think justifiably so, for trying to raise people's property taxes to be able to do that. This tax is on food and beverage only, and that tax will, 1%, that tax will pay for a new park facility. That money, by state mandate, will be only directly spent within the park system. But, the other additional benefit of that is that even though that money has only, is only going to be spent on the park, the additional sales tax that will be generated from that, that money goes to the general fund. If, according to the calculations, by year two or three of the park opening, we start having the number of tournaments that we think we were, that we are capable of hosting, similar to this weekend where we're having 40 teams, we start doing that about 10 or 20 times a year, that number is going to increase, adding to our general fund budget of approximately $250,000. That's a mill. That's a mill that we would have otherwise have to add a mill to your property tax to be able to take care of streets or drainage. So it's additional money that we will be, luckily, that we get to spread that around. About 30 or 40%, it looks like, of these sales tax figures comes from people that don't live in Starkville. People that come here to go to football games, to come to visit Mississippi State, that would be coming to play in these tournaments. So having them contribute to our general fund, along with the food and beverage tax, while we don't have to pay that tax by ourselves as citizens, to fund a major piece of infrastructure that, yes, will ultimately be some economic revenue generator, but more importantly than that to me, is that it's community building. I think it is absolutely community building. Not every kid is going to choose to play baseball and softball. That's okay. We have other choices. Where, you just saw tonight, we approved resurfacing basketball courts at McKee, at JL King Park. There's other things planned in all those parks in everybody's wards. There is no doubt we had drainage issues that need to be addressed. Alderman Vaughn has them in his ward, I have them in my ward, we have them in everybody's ward. And we're going to continue to face that. That's just one of those things that a city faces. We're going to face infrastructure woes throughout. It's like when you buy a house. There's always going to be something on that house that you have to fix, whether that's gonna be your roof or updating a bathroom. There's constant maintenance that has to be done. And so that's a never-ending cycle of things that have to happen. But I do think that we have a plan. I think there's been others before us that have had a plan for how you do that, and now with this use tax that's gonna be coming, along with finding additional ways to generate more revenue, to be able to go out and fix and maintain things, that is a plan that puts the city, in my mind, on sound footing moving forward to make sure that, over time, we're going to begin to catch up, to making sure that our roads are taken care of, that our drainage is improved as we move along, and give us time to go back and fix the things that are problems that were made decades ago, that are a lot more expensive and a lot more problematic to go back and fix on the back end. But that's where we are. That's where every city is. While I don't want us to be Oxford, and I don't want us to be Ridgeland, I also don't want us to be some of the other communities that are drying up and dying on the vine. I choose. I think we should choose to be a community that is looking forward and finding a way to continue to thrive and be viable. That's what it's going to take, to have people to want to come and live here. And part of that is good quality schools. I think we're seeing those improve. I think you're having good quality parks. There's no question we're seeing that improve. I think it's also having good quality access and good restaurants and good places that people want to visit, and Starkville has those, and we're continuing to do that. What's going to make it happen is, Alderman Little is right, the citizens have an opportunity to come out and vote on May 30, to vote either yes or no for this parks initiative. That is a huge step in moving us forward. It allows us to be able to build a quality park and refurbish our existing parks, to have them be an economic generator, but also to be that community building part that I think is equally important. So I encourage everybody, if you want to make sure that you have all the facts about what this vote is going to do and how it's going to affect you, please reach out. There's some great websites out there. Vote Yes for the Parks is a good opportunity to see how the money can be spent, where it can be spent. It's not a use tax. It's not going to affect you when you go to the grocery store and buy your groceries. It's only going to impact you when you go to a restaurant and buy prepared food or beverage. So I am fully committed to supporting this project. I think it is without question the right move for our city to make to move forward, and I encourage everybody to get out and vote yes on May the 30th. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Sisdrum?
One more vote yes for Starkville Parks here. And I think Alderman Walker did a great job of explaining how this benefits more than just the park system. It does benefit the community as a whole. It should be a thing that the community can be proud of. It's a chance for us to make an investment in our community. Having looked back at budgets for long, long periods of time, the City of Starkville has over probably the last 15 or 20 years, had two, two small increases in taxes that were used for operational increases. Otherwise, any tax increase has been for a building process, the police station, the city hall building. We have, we have not, we have not invested in our community, and we wonder why we have potholes, why we have drainage problems, why we have difficulties with our infrastructure. So at some point, we have to, we, being the So at some point, we have to, we being the board and we being the citizens of Starville, have to recognize that this is a team effort and it's going to take all of us wanting these things. One of the things I've been pleased about with this Parks Initiative is that there seems to be a community demand for it, and people seem to be willing to pay for it, which is very encouraging to me that we are getting to that point. I also am glad to see people here tonight to talk about stormwater and how we address some of that. Because when I was on the board before, in 2009, we were talking about stormwater then. And we were looking for ways, we were looking for revenue, we were looking for money, about how to fix these sorts of things. We adopted a stormwater ordinance with a good bit of pushback from development communities and some citizenry, because nobody likes to be told what they can do with their property. We did adopt an ordinance, and we looked hard at trying to find a way to fund a major restructuring of our stormwater system. We were not successful. 10 years later, we're in that same boat. And we need a bigger boat now than we did 10 years ago. But, and these things will happen when the community gets to that point of saying enough. We need these things, we want these things, and we're willing to pay for these things. Thank you. Vote yes for the parks, May 30th. If you're 65 or older, if you work seven to seven and can't come to the polls on May 30th, if you're going to be out of town because you're traveling, you can vote absentee. And Ms. Harden will make sure you have your photo ID like she did me.
One more thing. While I've got a captive audience for the Ward Three folks out there, you heard the mayor mention that we have an opening on the P&amp;Z Commission, Planning and Zoning, effective at July 1st. They're about to be advertising. If there's any, I'd say some very qualified people. If anyone's interested, it's a six-year term. And if you know of anybody in Ward Three that might be interested, please send them my direction or through the clerk's office. They can send a letter of interest, and we will certainly consider it as this goes forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that reminder. Okay, seeing no further comments from the board, we will move to citizens' comments. And this is an opportunity for citizens. You have three minutes, and it is timed. You may come and share your thoughts and ideas with the Board of Aldermen. This is not an interactive opportunity normally, so we just encourage you to come, and we will let you know when your three minutes is up. Mr. Turner.
Greetings to the mayor and board. My name is Adam Tunnawatt, 7th. To the Board of Aldermen, to the mayor, to the police. I come from a single parent family, being the oldest boy. I got more than I ever had in my life. Been good, life been good. But our people get to the breaking point. When they get to the breaking point, the police department and NAACP only can keep people calm for so long. Or then someone might snap. But, it seems like that some people have a feeling for themselves. I can eat bread, water, and keep going. But we got a generation that didn't come up like I come up. We have problems, we have situations at the family center on 25. We got potholes that hopefully people will call. If they hit that pothole too hard, gas and rock don't mix. We also have problems with the sidewalks and the main street. It's sad that you have to wipe the hole and keep from falling. We shouldn't have to be in that situation. Also, they tried a couple of times to silence the voice of the community. Almost did, by a couple of votes. But the community, they would that you listen. Because as I said, people get to the breaking point. You can make them snap. We don't want to be like everybody is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else?
I'm Adam Davis. I happen to live in Ward Three. I want to address Mr. Vaughn, listen to what you said. I appreciate your comments. The one response I wanted to say to that is you made the statement that because we've had some stormwater issues that happen to be on South Montgomery, now it's getting attention. I think that statement is incredibly false. What we've got is a citizen, Ms. Dodd, that has spent five days going door to door, asking for help, putting together a PowerPoint presentation, following all the proper channels to get the city's attention. And in my opinion, it is totally irrelevant of where the flood issues occurred, is that we have a citizen that actively engaged their community, our local community, and followed all the proper channels to get people's attention. So for you to make the statement that because of where the issue occurred, now it's getting attention, I think is false. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Anyone else?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of Aldermen, my name is John Tolliver, 26 Choctaw Road. Alderman Walker says we have a choice. I didn't choose for the water, the sewage water to back up into my home. I didn't choose that almost nine months ago. You said we have to work on fixing our home every once in a while. I'm still fixing my home. I didn't choose to have to be paying out thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars because you all are paying out nothing. Ward Six is where this happened. When it happens over in One, somebody gets some help. When it happens in Three, somebody gets some help. The newspaper wouldn't even talk about the fact that sewage water backed up into my house. CBI wouldn't talk about the fact that sewage water backed up into my house. We've been out of our house three months, three birthdays, holidays and everything else. Friday, we celebrate 22 years of marriage in an apartment that we still, that we are paying for because y'all are doing nothing. You say we have choices. You all have choices. Have you made yours? There was a woman, in scripture, kept going back and kept going back and kept going back to a judge because she wanted justice. And she went back enough times that the judge, the judge didn't fear God or man, but the judge gave her justice. I'm glad that that woman didn't live in Starville, Mississippi. Because if she did, she'd be out. I hear people want to live here. People want to move here. I live here. What you doing for me? I want to live here. What are you doing? I'm a citizen. You don't care? You don't care? My complexion, the fact that I work for you, which one is it? You don't care. And you say you care, but your actions... See, I'm from old school, and actions have always been louder than words. And your actions show that you don't care about every citizen in the city of Starville. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tolliver. Alderman Little?
Mr. Tolliver, I appreciate you bringing that forward every week, every other week, rather. And I've heard you, and I've heard you over the last several months.
Nine months.
Last September 5th, if I recall, September, early September.
Yeah, September 5th, always.
I recall very vividly. I went through what you went through at my office about four years ago, personally, backed up. And I want to treat every citizen in Starville the same. And by doing so, I had to report a claim. I went through a process through the city's Mississippi Municipal League Insurance Carrier. And I dealt with a local adjustment, I'll say local, he was at Tupelo, came down, measured, you know, and they paid the loss. They didn't pay for everything because it was actual cash value, it's appreciated. But we got paid and we fixed our building. I know other residents in town, the same thing has happened to. They go through the insurance carrier. They don't come through the Board of Aldermen. That's why we hire an insurance company to handle and process those claims and treat everyone the same. We're removed from that process, okay? And I believe they've handled yours. I don't know all the particulars, but I've heard some of them. But they've handled your claim. And if you're never happy with what the insurance carrier does, if you've got a valid tort claim, you can take, there's legal remedies you can seek. But beyond that, I don't know what else we could tell you going forward. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good afternoon. My name is Caitlin Neely, and I'm a part of the Mayor's Youth Council. And I want to thank all of you guys for giving the community the opportunity to speak their mind, their opinions on everything you bring up. I would like to say for the new park, voting on the new park, I think that'll be good for the younger kids to explore their options with sports. I didn't do it personally, but my little sister, she might want to experience these different things that the park has to offer. So I would like to thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Neely. And thank you for being part of the Mayor's Youth Council. I hope you've enjoyed that experience. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good afternoon. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Ward Seven, Henry Vaughn, my alderman.
My name is Chris Taylor, Ward Seven. I have about four or five things I hope you can answer. Well, not really four or five, but Thursday from 4:00 to 7:00 is also the NAACP voter registration drive, in addition to conversations about the park. So if you want to come out and talk about it, you for or against, we don't care. We're nonpartisan. So come on out. That's number one. Also, on the 26th, the Edwards Twins, one of them played professional ball, he having a barbecue party at the park from 3:00 to 6:00. He also having a book drive, kids' books. It's kids' book drive by Black, BLAC care to life. And also it'd be a duck kickball, domino, cards, DJ foods and drinks. They paying for it. So come on out, enjoy yourself. In addition, NAACP will have a table there. The same thing, we will discuss if you want to about the parks, along with your voter registration drive. Now, number three. Ms. Harden, now it's Saturday, last day to vote absentee.
Tuesday until noon.
Tuesday until noon. Because I want everyone to understand that if you're not going to be in town Thursday, you got the Tuesday to noon to get up there and vote. Come right here, right?
Yes, sir.
Right next door, right next door. Gotcha. Now, Monday is Memorial Day. That's where we honor our war dead. Okay, it'd be a ceremony right here across from the courthouse, in front of the county courthouse at the flagpole, 11 o'clock. Come on out. And what I mean war dead, those are the ones that killed in action from Altipec County. And we have lots of people, family members and friends that have been killed. So come on out and support the veterans. Great opportunity. Now, question, Mr. Vaughn. Now, this on page, page three, item two, is that the walking track we're going to discuss tonight? Or that's a different track? Well, I want to know if the walking track that that J.L. King Center on here, because it needs to be resurfaced.
No, that's not that.
That's not that.
The J.L. King Center itself.
Okay, well, we really need that on that walking track. Everyone in this town uses it. So come on out. I'd like to see that on there. And last, Mayor, do we have an update on the building at J.L. King Drive and Douglas Connor Drive? That's an eyesore for 182 corridor. 182 and Washington Street.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Do we have an update?
No, we do not. Although we are going for a build grant, which would take care of 182 corridor, which I have great hopes that we might actually get this year, so.
God, that's embarrassing to look at.
It is, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
Mayor, may I address one thing that the gentleman from Seven said?
Vice Mayor, I recognize you, yes, sir.
Mr. Taylor, thanks for bringing up the matter of the dilapidated structure at the corner of D.L. Connor, Dr. D.L. Connor Drive and Highway 182. We have been discussing that structure for some time. I know we, the board gave a very considerable discussion of that matter during the 2013-2017 term. And given your request and given the appearance of that structure, I'm hoping that this board will give that matter a major priority. It is a complete eyesore. And to my recollection, the board did enter action on its official minutes to the extent of recognizing and declaring that it's a nuisance. It's just a matter of getting that matter into the end zone in terms of making it happen. I think it can happen if we collectively make that happen. You see it daily, the Vice Mayor see it daily, my constituents see it daily, and we are tired of it existing. You know, we have the power, we have the ability. Whatever this city, Mr. Taylor, wants to do, as you well know, is a lifelong citizen, can do it. We need to get rid of that structure over there. We've been talking about it. Even when the former director of the Community and Development Department was here. The board took the action to declare it being a nuisance, and what do you hear? No money, no money. It costs too much money. So I'm glad you brought that up. That's why I want to elaborate on your point. And so hopefully you'll keep talking about it.
Yes, sir.
And one second. And you have my full support, and I have always been a proponent of that. I mean, if you go down there, in case those of you who do not know what we are talking about, and those of you who are joining on this meeting and viewing this meeting live, and those of you who may see this meeting on later date, we are talking about the location of Dr. D.L. or Dr. Douglas L. Connor Drive and Highway 182. In other words, if you leave at the front of this building, you go down the hill from the courthouse, old courthouse, into the shared apartment, and get to that light, the building right there on your right. It is just an eyesore. It's just a danger. It's a shame. It's a disgrace. And I told the property owner when he was here. He sat right out there. I don't mind. That's what my job is to do, is to tell the people. I told him that. And recently, I'm so passionate, I'm fixing you, my colleague, my classmate here. But I told him that. And I wasn't intending to address anything tonight. But since you brought that up, I told him, as he sat out there, it is a shame, it's a disgrace, the building needs to be torn down. You, Mayor?
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Oh, thank you. Also, I forgot one thing. Like Dorothy, I say, all aldermen, not just Ward Seven where I live, but 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, all aldermen, you work for me. Thank you. We vote for you.
Let me elaborate a little bit more. There is a build grant that we are applying for, which hopefully is to take that entire 182 corridor and improve it dramatically. It is a large grant. We have applied for it for the last three years. We came very, very close, according to those who dole out those grants last time, to receiving that. And it would give us that opportunity to do that. That building, we got a bid on it to tear it down, and it was in the neighborhood of $250,000. And that was just to tear it down. That piece of property sadly is not worth that amount of money. And so we did not do it at that time, hoping again that this build grant might come to fruition. But the Vice Mayor is absolutely right. It is an eyesore. Mr. Taylor is right. It is an eyesore. And it is just a complicated, it is not just a matter of tearing the building down. It has storm drains underneath it. It is much more complicated than just taking a wrecking ball and a large sledgehammer and just knocking a building down. So anyway, it is something we have certainly continued to look at as an option for how we could clean that corner up, which it certainly needs it. But anyway. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board?
Mayor, Vice Mayor?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Alderman, thank you for this opportunity. I didn't come prepared to talk, but I came in on the tail end of uh, Ward Seven Alderman, my Alderman, Alderman Vaughn. I didn't hear the whole thing, but I really appreciated the ending of it, and I'm sorry I wasn't here for the whole of it.
Mr. Buckner, just identify yourself for the record, please.
Alright, sorry, Johnny Buckner, Ward Seven.
Thank you.
Um, and I'm here as a citizen. I want to say, I'm thankful that we're addressing storm water. It's been an issue for us on Washington Street in particular for the last four or five years. And we have taken photos, got them into the City Hall here, taken, taken them over to the City Engineer, and appreciate the reception that we've gotten. I, I would say, Alderman Vaughn, as a part of our ward, seeing you out there year after year, actually, you cleaning out drains, rolling up your sleeves, has really been an encouragement to us all. And also to Edward Kemp, he has been, has given us a, a, an ear and has been sympathetic to what's been going on, and I understand recently that you may have been out there. Uh, Alderman Sistrunk, I appreciate some of the words that you said and the acknowledgement that our, our water drainage system has been in need for years. That it's been needing to be updated, I guess it was ten years ago when you were on, on the board. We don't have the luxury as, as individual citizens when we can't afford to do something to not get it done. If we don't do things up to code, then we suffer consequences. Uh, it's, it's interesting to me that we could have had this problem and known, known that it needed to be updated, but to be able to use the excuse that it's not in the budget concerns me, because that's not the way that we operate as citizens. If we as citizens don't follow code, we're quickly challenged. I've heard that from other developers and other citizens. So I just want to uh, register, I'm, I'm thankful that other places in the city are speaking up as to the needs, but it has been a need on Washington Street for quite a while. And uh, two, two drains were put in, it's not adequate. That, the, the tunnel that goes under the, the road there on Washington Gillespie is not, not adequate. And with all the development that's gone on in the city, um, the need has gotten greater. It overflows that now. So I appreciate any consideration that you would give us. And again, Alderman Vaughn, thank you, especially for the last part of your, your word and for the passion that, that you are serving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckner.
May I?
Vice, oh, I'm sorry.
And I'm, I'm not engaging, so, so, I'm not engaging, but I would like to, to respond to the, the idea of, of the code and the budget. The code um, deals with individual projects as, as rule. Our stormwater problems, our drainage problems, are the accumulation of years and years and years of, of problems, decades of, of problems. The idea that, that um, the money is not in the budget, the, 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 the question becomes, what do we not do? Do we reduce our number of policemen? Do we not pave streets? Do we, uh, there, until we are willing to realize that these things cost money, we, we are struggling to balance all the things that are going on in, in the city on, on any days, on any given day. We, there are things we could do that would reduce personnel, that, that would potentially free up money for some of these other projects. I, I don't think that's the route that most people would want us to take, because I think there's continuing demand for more personnel as, as we grow. At the end of the day, it's a question of prioritizing our resources as best we can. And, and for us as a community to recognize that, that there's only so many dollars, and we, we will spend them as best we can. If, when we hear from people, we will try to prioritize those things as, as we can. But there are not enough dollars to do everything this board wants. I see Mr. Prentice out there, he was on the board tw- twenty years ago. There weren't enough dollars then, there, there weren't enough dollars then to do everything that needed to be done or, or they would have liked to have done. So we, we are at a, we are at a point where it, it's a money issue, and, and it is, where do you, and it's not a ten or fifteen thousand dollar money issue. That building on one eighty-two that, that uh, was being discussed, I think the, it, the bid was actually about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I, I remember that number as being bigger than what you remember it. Um, that's, that's of, of staffing a fire station for a year. Those are, those are difficult decisions to make, and we do our best, we really do, but um, it, we, we don't have everything that we need.
May I respond? May, may I respond?
Alderman Sistrunk?
Sure, or, or we can visit after.
Well, I, I just want to say, thank you, thank you for calling, for addressing me and, and clarifying that way. Uh, two things, one is, I hope that you will let me use that as a reason for not doing things.
Certainly, I don't, I don't control that, so.
Well, I don't, I don't think that we would, I think the fact is, all of us have to live by a budget. And I appreciate what Alderman Perkins said, that we're gonna get things done. What, what we see needs to be done is gonna get done. I, I appreciate what you're saying. But you know, as the city is looking at other options, like even, you know, the potential of annexation of more, more uh, outside of the city limits already, with all the problems that might be engaged there, I think, I think uh, there does need to be some creative looks at, at the budget. And I, I certainly wouldn't suggest uh, cutting back on law enforcement or any of our services here. I think we need to increase that, because things are getting more challenging. But I, I, I hope that you hear that the reasoning that you're giving me is not going to be acceptable if I make that reasoning to, to the.
I, I, I do hear that, and, and I would like to issue a, an invitation to you and to anyone else who's interested. We will be starting our budget cycle in, in just a matter of a, a few weeks. We will have public hearings about the budget. We will um, be developing a, a plan for what we're gonna spend over, over the next twelve months. And I, I would welcome anybody who wants to come and help us come up with a couple million dollars to do the kind of things that, that need to be done. I'm, I'm, I'm more than, more than welcoming of, of that. I, I take no, no pride in thinking that I know all of this. Even amongst our Aldermen, they, they also need to be engaged and involved, but certainly, there'll be posted notices, there'll be public hearings, um, and we're, we're, we're looking for solutions.
You're good with numbers and good with budget, I know that, you've been around for a while with that. Thank you for what you do with that. Again, I would just say, make the consideration of, of, of the expenses as you consider further developments. Because we do, we need some help.
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board under Citizens Comments? Okay, seeing none, I will close it as Citizens Comments. Our next item on the agenda is going to be public appearances, and what I want to do before we uh, go into the first item of public appearance, which is Mr. and Ms. Dodd from two eleven Turnberry Lane on the storm drains. Mr. Kemp, do you have your video? Mr. Addy, do you have that video up? Yeah. Lisa, would you do that? Um, okay, this is, this is a video of the Country Club Estates area, and I thought it would be, Edward, would you come forward, please, sir? So you'll have a mic and you can talk about it, please? This is a video which I thought was very illuminating in the sense that um, it will hopefully share some of what I don't think anybody necessarily understands the whole picture of. So Edward, I'll let you do the narrative, if you would, please.
Tell us where, if you, where's that initiated? Where about the cameras, what we're looking at, what area, what street, or inlet?
If I could also start about the reason why we were out there investigating. You brought to our attention that there was a blockage, um, and I can't remember exactly where the street was, but there was a, a large log in a, um.
Are you speaking about?
Yeah. There was a large log in a, in one of the storm drains after one of the latest storm events.
Is the mic on?
Check.
There you go, you're good, okay.
I'll hold it up like that. And so after we heard about that, we have obviously removed the log, but then it uh, came into our attention that we probably need to survey the inside of these pipes to make sure that it wasn't any other blockage. And so we did that, primarily the primary main lines of that uh, former Skinner Creek as it extends from the north end of the subdivision near the beginning of Phase One and Two, where it comes together all the way through to where it goes to the Country Club itself. And we found, um, we found several things um, in there, but one of them, the most eye-opening things that we found was this video here. This was at the intersection of Turnberry and what's y'all's side street, Royal, Royal Trune, yeah. Which is very close to, at the intersection there with the Dodds. And you could see um, in some of these pipes that there is an accumulation of several inches of um, silt, mud, runoff, gravel, construction materials that have.
Matt, take it back to that last pipe that shows the, there, thank you.
Is that, is that one of the two that run between Tabor and Delise's house?
Um, I'm not exactly sure which, which one is which, but that is that main um, intersection where all those pipes come together. There are several, and the, the drainage actually goes in multiple directions at that location. As I, I believe that that pipe is the one that, that continues further east up the hill on Turnberry, if not, if I'm not mistaken. I believe that. We also discovered um, some buckets that were lodged in there. We removed those and we've um, talked with some of the contractors about trying to do a better job of trying to remove those. So that, that is the.
Uh, now let me ask while I have you, um, we have, in order to remove that, and let, and let's be clear, you guys, there's a lot of construction going on out in your neighborhood. This is silt from silt fences and construction sites that has gotten into the storm drain system. What do we need to do to, to get that out? You've got those, uh, those arrangements made with Mr. Kemp Senior?
Yeah, we're coordinating with the, with the Utilities Department, they have the equipment and um.
Do we have a timeline on that yet?
I don't think we have it scheduled uh, yet, but we, we do have it on, on our list to do. We're, we kind of are at their mercy a little bit on when that'll be done, but um, I, I think that it's probably a um, half a day job or so to get that done, to get all that, that, those ones that we can see right there.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I'd also like to say, in the Community Development Department, they're taking a more proactive approach as well about trying to eliminate the sediment from getting into the storm drainage system, and they're doing that by um, trying to educate and uh, the contractors that are working on some of these project sites and to really do a lot more uh, erosion inspections in anticipation of storm events. So um, I think we're trying to attack it from different angles.
Okay, that, and that was the other piece of that, is that uh, those silt fences that you see around those construction sites are part of what keeps this from happening, and we are trying to be much more proactive about making sure that those silt fences are kept up. And I didn't mean to steal your thunder, I just wanted you to see that, because I thought was, I, I was struck by how um, eye-opening that was in terms of the amount that had collected in there, because I would not have thought it would have gotten to that point. So Ms. Dodd, the floor is yours. And you have ten minutes to provide us whatever information you'd like to share with us.
Yeah. I think we decided we're gonna put these face down during, it's all the flood pictures, until I'm finished with my speech, because I want to be heard for my story, not where I live. Okay? Thank you. So, my name is Anna Spavy Dodd. I'm here today representing the Dodd family, um, residing at two eleven Turnberry Lane in Country Club Estates. If you could flip them over, please, I don't want anybody to look at them while I'm talking, if that's okay? Just because I want, my story should be heard solely. Okay. I'm a native of Starkville, who like many others, moved away but decided to move home to be closer to my family and hopefully retire here one day. When we first moved into Country Club Estates, we lived in Phase One, which was at one ten Oakmont Road. It was across the street and two houses away from my parents, Patty and Eddie Spavy. We had several rains, but never saw anything too concerning during the first few years. As Phase Two began to develop, the water seemed to start rising. My parents, who live at one nineteen Oakmont Road, began to have water that would rise out of Skinner Creek and flood to their yard due, due to drainage issues. It started happening more often. We moved into our current house, which is now on Turnberry Lane, in October of two thousand seventeen. There was a heavy downpour about a month prior that got in the house, but no water got inside. The first noted, in your handout, you'll see, in Phase Three flood was in June of two thousand fourteen. But an even bigger one came Christmas Day on two thousand fifteen. Heavy water filled the streets, but no houses were flooded. The next time this happened was June sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, which was about a year and a half later. So this has been going on for quite some time, not just the sediment. Again, the roads were flooded, but no water got inside any houses. So far this year, we've had approximately five flooding events, which means it's happening more frequently and the water is getting higher and higher each time. We had three floods within a ten-day period in April. On April eighth, two thousand nineteen, the water filled the roads and expanded in several yards, but no homes were flooded. April thirteenth was the day of the flood. It's the day I feared, it was the day it got in every door of my home. It was a scary feeling being inside your house, your safe place, and not being able to leave because of the water that surrounded you. We were trying to put up our furniture and belongings on higher surfaces to save them. But we were also prepping to save our children and ourselves if the water kept rising. We stayed up most of the night cleaning up the water with the shop vacs. My neighbors came across with waiters on to come help us, because they couldn't get across to us. The next day, we hired a company to come and remove the excess water and dry out everything to minimize the damage. However, our hardwood floors are damaged so buck, buck, bucking up so badly, we can't walk around, it's a danger zone. So I did do the proper protocol and I did do the insurance claim through the proper channels. Our home has been in disarray since then, which was over a month ago. We have not only had repairs to deal with, but the cost of cleanup. But our main concern is it doesn't happen again. Unless something is done and done quickly, it will. I know that, this is a government entity and it, the study and the situation specialists, which can take years. But we don't have time for studies and specialists to be hired. We need someone to quickly look at our problem and take some corrective action immediately. Another thing I wanted to point out was on April eighteenth, which was five days after the flood got in my house, heavy, heavy rain came again. That were on, that were pretty much as high as the April thirteenth flooding. During this flood, Starkville Fire Department was dispatched to fire an alarm on one ten Pinehurst, which was the home that faces Cypress Point in our neighborhood. The Fire Department was unable to respond, which I have pictures in that as well. And they had to part due to the high water. The firemen couldn't get there, but thankfully, thankfully the alarm was a water sensor and no fire was um, in progress, and they're here today as well to support. I called nine one one myself on the recent May eleventh flooding, which was the night before Mother's Day. Nobody came. It's also in the documents I provided. This document has a timeline and provides you everything. It's scary to think that someone could get hurt in order for something to be done. We are not in a flood zone. Many people that we've talked to, I've been going door to door since this happened and for the past five days, they all think it's the same thing, it's an inadequate drainage system and design from day one in Country Club Estates. Starting right behind my parents' house in Oakmont, Skinner Creek is routed into a storm drain, it's not big enough to begin with. And when it, the heavy rains come, the creek that's following a normal path, it took for years before the storm drains were installed. But this path is now along Sawgrass Road, Pebble, Pebble Beach Road, Cypress Point Road, and it turns and comes to Royal Trune, but come it, before it comes to my property on Turnberry Lane. While the drainage is full, the creeks now flood into the roads. All this water is flowing towards where a creek continues at Starkville Country Club. I've included in pictures of that creek as well. This, and in that creek, there's still debris that has not been cleaned out. I don't know the complete background, but I do know that the approval for Phase Three was stopped, then delayed for some time by the City of Starkville and the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality due to runoff water concerns. After some time, Phase Three was approved by the city and was allowed to move forward. Since then, the clearing began and the roads were installed. Now we have more water coming from Phase Three, mixing with the water we already have from Skinner Creek in Phase Two. I believe that the combination of failed drainage caused by the flooding and the damage to my home was that that happened on April 13th. I know that the city has met on several occasions here with Frank Jones and his engineer, Clyde Pritchard. They have come before the city and attest that their linear stormwater plan would handle the increased water flow in the new phases. I believe they even said this plan would improve the drainage in Phase Two. I was told the original plan, this was just someone told me this while I've been going door to door, that had a storm retention pond where now a house is. The city was hesitant to approve this plan because of past flooding, but you did. I'd also like to state, state that Frank Jones is the president of our HOA and there are no elected board members. Frank does not live in, in our community, in our neighborhood. And there's been previous attempts to create and elect board members. That was denied by Frank Jones. Regardless of how we got here, the good news is there's an opportunity to fix this problem. But the city must hold the proper people accountable and the developer. The more lots are sold means less retention area for the water. We have an actively building new subdivision we live in. So as the neighborhood grows, the drainage issues get worse. To allow him to continue to develop without changing anything will only lead to more damage and possibly litigation down the road. And we, nobody wants that. It's why we're here. These new phases in this neighborhood also have language in the covenants. It says, "The city shall not have any responsible liability with respect to the drainage easement and storm drainage system." This was agreed to by the city, Frank Jones, who is the president of our HOA. His engineers convinced you all that this drainage plan would work, but it's not. What do I think can be done? I know the city has begun, started cleaning the storm drains. I think it'll help. But I also think there should be additional storm drains to keep the water from flooding the street. One example is on Cypress Point Road where it rains, there's not, there's not even a heavy rain. And there's a large amount of water coming down east pouring on the Royal Trune Road. It's created its own ditch, which is also in my handouts. Lee Harris is here tonight and his house has flooded seven times. I appreciate you coming to support us. Many residents also believe there's a problem due to the water backing up in the creek that flows from the Country Club. When Skinner Creek hits Starkville Country Club and south of Country Club, there are trees and debris in there that in turn, the water backs up at the Country Club and comes back down to our drainage system, which will not handle the water. I think that the drains need to be cleaned, drained, added to our neighborhood, and the creek cleaned across the Country Club and further. Also, the new development between Fairway Drive and Poorhouse Road also drains in Skinner Creek. This creek cannot handle all this water. By the time it gets past Fairway Road, it's just a small ditch and this small ditch can't handle the water. It's all coming to my house. In closing, my husband and I are in our dream home, along with many others here tonight. We are paying some of the highest property taxes in the city. This neighborhood deserves better, no matter what it costs or takes. I'm tired of living with the fear of rain and living with sandbags in my front door. The value of everyone's property is at stake. If something is not done now, please don't let this neighborhood continue to develop without requiring Frank Jones to add additional areas and drainage. I don't care if he loses a lot. The city shouldn't care. This is a public safety and welfare issue. We have flooding issues that can be fixed now. If it wasn't done right the first time and made by Frank and the city, make sure it's done right now. I want to know who is responsible for my damage, should the city, for allowing the existing drainage plan, or Frank Jones and his engineers? I have damage to my house because of the city and Frank Jones, and I need answers.
Thanks. Thank you, Ms. Dodd. All right, um, next on the agenda is Ms. Latala Harris, who wants to talk about the J.L. King Center. Ms. Harris?
Were we planning on having any kind of discussion or are we gonna place this on the next agenda or?
We can place it on the agenda if you like.
Sure.
Edward, have you got a moment? Would you speak to the study that-
Ms., Ms. Hold on a minute.
I'm sorry.
No, I mean, I just, I can't-
I understand. I tell you what, let's let Ms. Latala Harris make her public appearance. And then we can, then we can do that. She's been waiting and she should be next on it. So we'll do that and then we can, we can have a, have a dialogue. Ms. Harris, are you ready? Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Board of Aldermen for having me here this evening. My name is Latala Harris. I am the current Project Manager of the J.L. King Center on, on the West Side in J.L. King Park. Um, you can just look through those packets that you have. It pretty much tells you everything that we do at the King Center. We pretty much do a wraparound service of GED testing for adults, young adults. We do workies testing. We do life skills, family classes, parenting classes. We do an after-school program for children in that neighborhood. We currently lost funding back in January from the family's first grant. We were under an umbrella service through the Starkville, Otipaw County School District with Dr. Butler and the Family, Emerson, Family Center Programming. So we were previously told that they will no longer be able to fund our program and they were pretty much not going to be able to pay our staff or pay for any more GED testing or utilities or anything at the J.L. King Center. Previously, we have Ms. Allison Buehler and the Light House Project through the Homestead. We have gathered sponsors from the community that are trying to raise six thousand, sixty thousand dollars in order to secure funds for us to run our program for five years. We currently have raised about twenty-five thousand dollars through that, um, project. We have secured funds for the summer to host a summer program, partnering with the Parks of Rec and Chicken Salad Chick and a couple of other donors that have given us money in order for us to be able to host a summer program for the summer. But our problem is that we are trying to keep the building open and keep the center open for that part of the community. It is needed. We service most of that community. We help people in that community. We help people get their GEDs. We help them with testing. It is needed. And if we close this building, if we close this program down, a lot of services in that neighborhood will go lost. A lot of people will be lost in that neighborhood. A lot of services will be lost. We won't be able to reach those people if we don't have this building in this particular neighborhood. So what you see on this yellow sheet of paper on your agenda that I passed out for you is our monthly budget. Uh, I have here our electricity, internet, water, salary, supplies, summer programs. Pretty much is what we totaling up for what we pretty much need in order to run programs. Right now, we are trying to get our utilities paid so we can focus on pretty much keeping the building open and our services going, ongoing so we can continue to help the neighborhood and that community. So pretty much, we're trying to see if we can receive some type of public funding from the board in order to keep our utilities going. We need our lights, internet, and our sewage and water to be paid so we can keep our services going in our community. So if you guys would consider us on public funding, it would be greatly appreciated. This center is needed. We work hard every day to help people in our community. We serve them. We feed the children. We help with clothing. We help with assisting parents to getting classes. We do anger management, which is court order anger management. As of now, we won't have that anymore because we don't have that services through Emerson Family Center Programs anymore. So right now, we're trying and we're exhausting all the funds that we have in order to keep the services going in this particular neighborhood. As you all know, that side of the neighborhood is, this service is needed more on that side of the neighborhood more than any neighborhood in our, in our county, in Starkville. I stand behind the King Center. My staff stands behind me. We're not going anywhere. We're gonna fight and we're gonna continue to try to raise funds to keep the King Center open. If you guys know anything about the King Center, what it stands for, who started the King Center, you know the importance of the King Center. So that's my presentation for you guys this evening. Thank you for having me and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Okay, um, shall we circle back? Does the board wish to have a discussion about the storm, the storm drain and how to deal with that? Ms. Kemp, I believe, um, Mr. Little asked about you coming forward.
Ms. Little?
Could you update, I've shared with them on social media and neighborhood website, um, could you share with, could you share with the residents of Country Club Estates as to what, what we're doing as far as the study and what we hope to glean from that?
Yeah, it was, um, after the last few rain events we had down there, it was, um, a lot of videos, a lot of, a lot of photographs, a lot of people that were there.
Indicated that there was some concern about the linear basins functioning as they were designed.
Can you hear me now? I think I was pushing the button on accident. Those linear basins were initially designed to retain as well as convey the water to meet the stormwater ordinance as well as to convey the hundred-year storm event is what the, the engineer calculations said and that they, you know, provided their engineering stamps on those plans verifying that. With the concern that has been raised, we are asking this consultant to look at this design and not only how it was initially designed, but how it was constructed to make sure that it does meet those two requirements, that it meets the stormwater ordinance and that it also is capable of conveying the hundred-year event as was alluded to by us during the design review.
When do we anticipate?
Anticipate that being done near the end of this month is what-
Completed?
Is completed and with any validation, verification, uh, or recommendations from that as well, by the end of the month, is what she's indicated to me.
Uh, Ms. Kemp, while you're here, um, we had talked at one time about the basins, the various basins around the city. You said there were three or four or something like that?
It's about four basins.
Okay. Um, what is, what would be your best estimate of what it would cost us to study those basins and determine where that flow is and where we might locate mitigation points in those different four basins? I mean, I don't, I realize I'm throwing that at you, but with the study that this lady, that this business, this company has, has quoted to us, would that inform you as to what it might be to, to do a study like that?
The objective would be to-
Well, to, to see what the, what the base, where the basins are and where they, where they flow and where we might find mitigation points within them, just like the Overstreet-
So looking at vacant, open spaces, um-
That would be attributable to each one of those basins that we might then have a mitigation opportunity? Okay, well, that's okay. You can say you don't know. I just thought maybe you might be able to wing it.
Twenty to thirty thousand would be my guess, but you know, I think you would, you would, I guess, just thinking out loud. I think you would first want to identify the problems. We know where a lot of the problems are, but you would want to just, you know, do those calculations. And then you would look for those areas adjacent to or in a very close proximity to those areas upstream preferably to, um, to try to slow down some of the flow going through those problem areas. And so I think the, the, the more granular detail that you get into, the more actual calculations where you're analyzing existing pipes, sizes, having to calculate slope, et cetera, et cetera, obviously the cost is gonna go up.
Sure, yeah.
So, but, but a very big picture, like a thirty thousand foot view, yeah, it would probably be less than that.
Okay, all right. Just trying to think of ways that we can-
Edward, what about-
Gather the question.
The trees and anything blocking the, on the Country Club and what's, that's private property?
Yes, that's the first I've heard about that. Um, yeah.
Or do we, or don't we, or what's-
Our city policy is that if there is something that is encumbering the flow or, uh, blocking the flow, that we will go remove that obstruction. So if that's, if that is the case, then we'll have to coordinate that with the, um, Country Club and to see about trying to do that. Now, everything south of Fairway Drive obviously is out of our jurisdiction, so I don't know if we would have the, even the ability to go do that. I may have to defer to Chris on that, but, um, we could certainly do a walk down that creek just to see if there's any kind of major blockage or obstruction.
I know you had mentioned to me previously about contacting a resident to the north of the neighborhood about potential retention pond, and that was shot down, if I understand correctly. Is cleaning it out the ditch below, do you think that would help mitigate the situation at all or?
I mean, my personal opinion is that the drainage channel downstream is much larger than what is flowing into it. In other words, the cross-sectional area, the drainage channel is much larger than the forty-eight and the sixty-inch pipes combined that flow into it. So I think the issue is the pipes, the water getting out of the pipes into the creek, not the creek backing water up into the pipes.
So the pipes are undersized from the get-go?
Yes.
Poor design, basically?
Well, the pipes are definitely undersized. There, there could, there, you know, the bridge on Fairway Drive is smaller. You know, it's a single span. I believe it's a nineteen-foot wide, uh, bridge, precast. We did some improvements on that three years ago or so. Um, so that is a, a little bit of a choke point, but again, the cross, if you do the cross-sectional area of that bridge versus the two pipes combined, I think you'll see that those are much smaller, the pipe sizes anyway. So I don't think, it may cause a little bit of tailwater right there near Fairway, but I don't think that it'll extend all the way up to, what's the name of that street? Turnberry, yeah, I don't think, because that's about, I think it's about two to three thousand feet up there, so.
That, that initial design in Phase One was probably oh-five? I know that was before your time.
About oh-five, I believe, yeah.
And we were the second home in the neighborhood and we've seen issues there near the Spavy's home since the first two or three months we were there. And I'm not an engineer, but I can look at the way the pipe, the design and say, "That's a bad idea." And I just, I still scratch my head on how that got through multiple engineers and MDEQ and, right, and so forth.
We did a, if you remember, we did a drainage study on that. I can, I can pull up the date, but we remember we evaluated those pipes that had come in right there at Phase Two and discovered that those were probably less than, handling less than a two-year storm event. So, yeah, they're, they're very much undersized.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Hold on a minute, Colver?
Let's see. Yes, first of all, thank you for coming up and I know the concerns y'all have. Obviously, I can't imagine it, but, um, I was gonna ask just a question. I mean, in the immediate, near immediate future, and without getting too deep in these studies, other than the culverts, is there anything they can do, the biggest bang, you know, anything we can employ? Let me back up and say this. I read it, I heard today, where we're at, what I said today, forty-one inches today. The record to date was twenty-one inches, so we've doubled that as, as a state. The Mississippi River is at the same levels it was at in nineteen twenty-seven. So when you, you hear this terminology of a hundred-year flood, I mean, I think this is it. And what you're doing is, in my ward and, and today I was helping Alderman Vaughn and the mayor was helping Alderman Vaughn and Ward Seven, is you're seeing when, when citizens' homes take on water and you get those calls and it kind of stops everything, and that's what we, we need to deal with first. So whatever we can do as a city, I mean, I know you don't have to call, you can call anybody on this board y'all wanna call. And, uh, and, and definitely we'll help Alderman Little however we can with this and Alderman Vaughn however we can help him, but, you know, getting in there and cleaning out ditches is, is not hard to do. I personally had a ditch in my front yard that was completely blocked in this last, it's gravel runoff, and they got over there that day and cleared it. And, uh, personally, I was taking gravel, you know, just a big, big, in my, big area in my own front yard, but, um, those are easy fixes. I would think we could get over there with y'all and, and handle that and call Alderman Little, myself, or anybody and get those crews over there and do that. And let's eliminate the, the big ticket items first and the easy items first, and then I go from there, but I'll just tell you personally- But I want to just tell you personally, anything I can do to help, we've got great department heads that are working, but we're seeing, I would say, I don't know, not accurately, but probably hundred-year type levels of things that are happening that I've seen Ward One that don't normally flood. We have areas that do hold water, but there's some, you know, and I can't imagine being new construction and being a, you know, a place that you built yourself and having to live through that. But anything we can do, I mean, call us and we're going to, you know, I appreciate your highlighting and coming up here and getting in the public eye, and it's not easy, I know, but anything you can do, just let us know. And I guess that's an opening question, if the mayor wants to take charge of this tomorrow and call department heads and whatever your thoughts are, I stand behind you, so.
Okay. Alderman Little was, let me recognize him, and then I'll come right back to you.
To Ms. Dodd's point, and which is really adds to the frustration, is it is a new neighborhood still currently under construction. It seems like Phase Three is exacerbating a problem that we were already experiencing, and that's what is so frustrating. And I'm a problem solver every day at work, that's what I do, I solve problems. And this has been one of the most frustrating for me because I don't know what, I don't know what the solution is, short of, you know, repiping the whole street, tearing up the streets, repiping everything, adding, I don't know if that would solve it if we get the rains like we've had in the last four months. And then where does that money come from? Because I see the budget every year, and we're scratching and clawing, and I've been trying to get one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for Clonan Hills issue for years, and Eric Parker was trying before me, and it comes back to money, and there's never enough, as Budget Chair alluded to earlier. But if we can do some of the low hanging fruit, get these things cleaned out, hopefully we'll get the normal rain cycle again and we won't be, we don't have these problems as often. I think there's going to be flash floods always in some of those lower points. I don't know what we're going to do on that, but we've got to address it, and if something, if those calculations come back and they weren't right, we're going to have to take some serious action in Phase Three and whatever it takes to get that, if someone has to give up lots and have retention ponds upstream, I think everything is on the table at this point, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Vaughn?
In all actuality, I thank y'all for coming, because you all helped us get some started, something I've been battling with ever since two thousand and nine. But I really thank y'all so much for coming, and they'll tell you anything that, that to help award, I never vote against, I never turn anything down to help, to war, to progress and to move forward. And like Alderman Carver say, they tell you, I'll be out in the street every time it rain. If you need me, please call me and I'll be there, because I don't like to see nobody house flood.
Thank you, Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Carver?
What are our options in a way of emergency finance and, you know, I know you can't do it through the mutual aid compact with other cities and typical emergency, you know, financing you do and help and assistance through mutual aid, you know, from a FEMA, MEMA standpoint, but what can you do for flooding when it starts getting to people's homes? Is there anything we can do from a mileage increase? Is there something we can?
Well, we have, and I don't, I don't remember if you were on the board at the time, but we, a number of years ago studied a stormwater management fee, and I think that's what Alderman Sistrum was alluding to, and we attempted to explore the opportunity for that, and unfortunately, we got an AG opinion that said that it is not a fee we can impose, it's a tax, and in order to get a tax, you've got to go through the legislature. So, but there are other states that are using exactly that methodology, but Mississippi doesn't allow that. I think it was Ocean Springs versus something, and I can't remember versus what. But that case keeps us from being able to create an impact fee of sorts, although I am delighted to revisit that issue because I do think that it is a citywide issue that we're going to need to look at, and I think Mr. Latimer can, can help us sort our way through that. And I've talked to Representative Robertson about it, I've talked about to E, to MML about it as a support structure for municipalities, because there are a number of municipalities dealing with that same issue. Representative Robertson said he would look at it as a possibility, so I've actually reached out to Commissioner Brandon Presley to treat it as a utility fee, because again, that's what other states are doing. So, I've had multiple discussions, the satisfaction is not there, but, you know, it's one of those things that we will continue to see what we can do. At the same time, I do think, you know, and I could certainly be wrong, because I'm not an engineer and I'm not a water specialist, but I do think that if we can find the basins that impact these areas, whether it's Washington Street or Country Club Estates, or it's Carver Ditch, or it's, you know, whatever it is where that water is, is forming into those basins, and find areas that may be amenable for mitigation, vacant pieces of land like the Overstreet Playground area, that we could turn into some stormwater detention areas, I think that's something worth exploring. Now, whether or not this particular company who's doing the Country Club Estates analysis would be the company to do that, I think when she's here doing that, I would love to engage with her and find out what that kind of study might cost and if it was even worth doing. I mean, I could be just, you know, pie in the sky here, but it just seems to me, from a logic standpoint, that that would be a decent methodology to start with as to how we might address this. So, and I can tell you what, I will yield to somebody who's got much more experience than I do at this sort of thing, Alderman Walker.
Well, I wouldn't necessarily go that far. I would say, I think what the mayor's beginning to talk about is something more akin to a regional-type detention, where you're thinking about at a watershed, and I think that is clearly something that we need to look at. And I would also just, just point out that she talked about logic, and I don't know that this, this is not going to help your situation and may only maybe feel like it's pouring salt into a wound, and that would not be my objective. But where the road is, is called Skinner Creek. And in the current code, we allow the creek to get piped. And when you allow the creek to get piped, the water is constricted and it doesn't have that typical area to be able to flood. In the most recent document, our community plan document, that we, one of the first ideas in that was to take all of those major creeks and we're going to have them be considered natural areas and a buffer around that, which would go a long way in terms of thinking about a regional detention. Anything where there was a blue line stream, there may be fifty-foot or a hundred-foot buffer on either side of that stream, and there was, there was no, we got a lot of pushback from the community in public meetings and public hearings about the ability of not being able to develop that land that was rightfully theirs, even though a creek may run through it. And so, that did not make it into the comprehensive plan. That got, that part got rejected. I think it is unfortunate that that got rejected. I think it is that type of thinking, if we want to talk about long-term, big infrastructure for how you deal with that, we have to do it. I think with the, because of the rain events that we've had this year and the increase of over twenty inches or so above average of where we are, I think the public's appetite might be changing a little bit for how we think about that, because while I hope it doesn't happen as frequently, I believe we're in more of a transition where we're going to have a lot more rain, a lot more often, and a lot more intense like you might have in a coastal type of environment. So, I think for us to think about planning for that long-term future and where we have to hold developers accountable for how we deal with that, the code, if you have to remember, the city of Starville's been around for how many years?
Eighteen thirty-five.
Eighteen thirty-five, and we've had a stormwater ordinance for how many years?
Ten.
Ten. And so, there was a lot of development that happened in our community prior to that, and a lot of things that were done is not how we would design and do them today. And so, there's a lot, there's a big web. There's a big web to try to uncover and untangle, to try to figure out how we solve those problems. And so, it is, there is no question that a big piece of it is money, all right? But the other big piece of it is strategy, and how do you begin to think about what are the, what are the ways that we're going to be able to solve a problem? Einstein said you can't solve the same problem of the new problem with the same way the problem that you used to create it. So, we've got to think out, we've got to think a little bit differently. This idea of regional detention and other things are a way to be able to do it. Alderman Carver's right, low-hanging fruit, how can we, you know, improve the conveyance of the flow? I don't know that there is a silver bullet in this case. I think it is going to be very interesting to see what the engineering study shows, and if those numbers don't add up, then, then we have, then we have an opportunity to figure out how do we begin to remedy that. But we have these issues all over, and we're seeing them exacerbated all over. Alderman Vaughn's got them. I've got them in Ward Four, we're having a meeting tomorrow about, in Pleasant Acres, about a bridge that they're trying to undersize, it's going to create more problems for that neighborhood. I've got problems on Willow Bend, and we all have these same issues. And part of it comes down to, you know, it's what we did to help get us to this point. And now, we're trying to pull back and figure out a way, how do we dig ourselves out of a hole that, that we put us in? And it was no by, not by anybody's intention or design to, to not deal with it, we've just, we've come a long way. We've come a long way, the city has grown, and how we think about stormwater has changed dramatically over the last decade or thirty years. And so, I think there's opportunity, and hopefully we're going to be able to find a way to be able to, to help the residents that are here that are experiencing these significant problems. But I think there's a, the bigger piece is, how do we think about dealing with stormwater from a, from a city perspective and not think about so much, it is lot by lot, but it's thinking about the watershed? How do we begin to think about it at a watershed level or a sub watershed level? And that's just not, well, that's just not where we've been. And I think we're beginning to figure out a way, how do we begin to do that that's going to help us? Heard ever since I've been a student in Starville and lived back here, we've said, we don't have stormwater issues, and the reason is, is because Starville was founded on a ridge. That's correct. One and a half miles were founded on the ridge, but everything else is running along a creek. And so, when you have that, water's going to, water's going to back up and we're going to have major issues. And so, now, as we continue to grow, as we continue to develop, we're seeing those problems exacerbated. And I, I'm hopeful, like the rest of the board members up here, if, if we can make a policy decision to help improve that, I am willing to make that policy decision to do that. I think it is up to us to hold the developers' feet to the fire, but they're only going to do as much as we decide we're going to make them do. And it certainly helps that we have a room full of people saying that we need this issue addressed, because whatever we're doing isn't working well enough. That's how change happens, that's how policy gets rewritten, that's how development patterns begin to change, and that's how hopefully we can improve the situation for the residents in our, in our neighborhoods.
Thank you, Alderman Walker. And we, no ma'am, no engagement, thank you. But you're welcome to stay afterwards and talk to anyone. And one of the things I think is probably pretty clear is that as we move forward with the code, we will be looking at that very seriously, but, you know, part of our past was reliance on developers, and I think we're finding ourselves in a position to have to go back and double-check some of those things. So, you know, from, from that, I think is what stems this particular study that we have in place, so. All right. Our next item to move along to is a second public hearing on ordinance. Starville Code, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Six, Section Two dash one sixty-four, amending the Board of Adjustments and Appeals process to allow for reappointment of a sitting board member if applications for position remain unfulfilled after advertising period has expired. I give everyone a chance to, to exit. All right. If anyone wishes to speak on this matter, this is a, this is a change to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals for reappointment of a sitting board member if we have no applications for that position. Anyone wishing to speak on this, either for or against, you're welcome to do so now. Anyone? Either for or against? All right, thank you. I will close it as a public hearing. The next item is the mayor's business, which is consideration of the mutual termination of the contract between the City of Starville and Starville Actibawa County Consolidated School System for the use of J.L. King Center approved by Board Order dated December sixth, two thousand and sixteen. And this was, in essence, what Ms. Letala Harris was here to discuss with us or to make a presentation about under her public appearance. This is a contract that was, that was entered into in two thousand and sixteen to allow the Emerson School to, or Dr. Joan Butler to continue to use the J.L. King Center for those after-school programs. It's been going on for twenty-five or so years, and I think this one was to extend it to allow a new roof to be put on, and I believe at this point in time since Ms. Butler, or Dr. Butler, excuse me, has lost her funding, that the best situation would be for us to mutually terminate this agreement. I had a conversation with Dr. Passan about this, and he was comfortable that that was in the best interest of both parties. The termination clause, I asked Mr. Latimer to look at it, the termination clause allows for the school district and the city to terminate based on certain elements, which was a six-month notice, which Dr. Butler did not have to give us because her funding ran out in, at the end of May. And so, then there was another, it was a quid pro quo for the city to do X in the, if, you know, if the contract was terminated. And mutual termination, termination would allow us to immediately get the, the building back, and Allison Bueller has gotten enough funding to do a couple of months of a program, and so, I was hoping that if we would go ahead and take possession, once again, we could allow that, the parts to have the utilities come back under them, and then that program could continue with the funding that's been received by Ms. Bueller. So, that was the goal, is to go ahead and terminate this contract so that the, the building could go back into use and still be allowed to be used for programs, which are, as Ms. Harris said, are, they're, they're willing to put on. And just as a further bit of information, it has been conveyed to a group who've been trying to keep this open, that Dr. Osselbrooks of EMCC is willing to fund a person and a after, that's not right, an after-work program for adult education. And so, I think that that is something that we can help facilitate and make happen as well, and that helps the, support that, that center too. So, I think there's some opportunities for us to keep the center open and still search for funding while we go into our budget session, which might allow us to offer them some other funding opportunities, so. Anyway, I would recommend, and that's the reason it's under mayor's business, I would recommend that we go ahead and terminate that contract and allow us to take the building back and then be able to move forward with some programs in it, so. Alderman Sistrum, can I see you, see your hand?
And I, I have a pretty straightforward question. If, if we take the building back, it would then become our responsibility as far as utilities and, and that sort of thing?
Yes.
So, that would address that particular question.
Yes. Alderman Vaughn?
If, if we take the building back and then we take, will we still allow them, we take the, the utility, will it still, we still allow them to use the building?
Well, I think that's one of the things, we would reach some sort of arrangement with either the Lighthouse Project or the, what's the name, Homestead, for use of the building. And I think we have to make that arrangement with Allison Bueller, she's the one who's heading that up, and so, I was hoping that we could negotiate until, they got it till the end of May. And I was hoping we could negotiate that and see if we could make those arrangements and have a satisfactory approach that the board would appreciate or that the board would approve.
I hope we can do everything we can in our power to, you know, try to continue them live, like I say, it's going to be a great hurt to the, to, to the neighborhood if we don't continue this program, and I just hope we can do anything, everything that we can, look deep in our hearts and try to find something to accommodate these kids, and I just hope we can do that.
Well, I'm hopeful that perhaps the long-range plan, I know that the Boys and Girls Club is looking for a new home, and I think Ms. Cologne has, has looked at the building and why it can't serve them right now, that it, that has possibilities in the long-term future. So, I think there's, it absolutely is a need, it's absolutely a great location for after-school programs, feeding programs and all that sort of thing, so I am hopeful that we can make that happen, but we just need to work our way through that, and I would like to bring it back to the board, hopefully, but at the next board meeting for some sort of go-forward for at least the next couple of months while we continue to try to find funding.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor move approval?
Thank you. I have a motion for approval to terminate the contract between the City and Starville Actibawa County Consolidated School District. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Alderman Sistrum. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. First item under board business is the subject of the public hearing, which is consideration of amending the ordinance for Board of Adjustments and Appeals for a reappointment of a sitting board member.
Do approval.
On the motion from Alderman Walker, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrum. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? All right. unanimous, motion carries. Let's see. Next item is under engineering, we have the Westside Drive sidewalk. Mr. Kemp, would you come up, because I would like us to provide the map that shows that. Mr. Addy, can you pull that up? Go ahead.
This, this project is, is basically one last link in a really important pedestrian route up on the north part of town. If you may remember, we built a sidewalk using sidewalk funds on West
on Westside Drive, uh, from Reed Road to Frontier Drive on the north side of the street. This is the old Landers Trailer Park that is, uh, in consideration for new development coming in the ne- near future. And of course, Long Street currently has sidewalk all the way i- into town. And then obviously, the park being a big destination for pedestrians. The last link we, that is in, in for consideration tonight, and, uh, we've been under a lot of design ideas with, uh, with Alderman Vaughn and, and the neighborhood over the last couple of years, really, is to try to find a way to get the A D A, uh, pedestrians from this sidewalk that we just completed down to the park. There are several residents that live in this neighborhood that currently are driving their motorized wheelchairs in the street. We explored, uh, coming on this side of the road where there's already a sidewalk, but it's not A D A compliant. We explored going through, um, the Housing Authority project here, up to North Long. But ultimately, ultimately, we decided to put it on the north side of Westside Drive from Frontier to Long Street. And we decided to do that for a couple of reasons. One, it was an extension of this, um, sidewalk that we had already built. And secondly, uh, we felt like we could meet A D A, the budget would be very comparable. And also, it provided a very important link to the Brickfire, uh, project here, which serves after-school programs as well as summer programs. And these, um, a lot of these kids are using the park, uh, for different types of activities, so to provide them a safe way to get from there, uh, to the park and back. So, um, what you have here is just a copy of the plans. Um, like I said, it extends from Frontier to Long Street. It has, uh, A D A, fully A D A accessible. There was one section that was unable to be A D A compliant, but we had to coordinate that with our A D A, uh, coordinator, and it was due to some constraints that, um, were unable to be corrected. But it will have an A D A ramp here on either end, um, and it'll ex, be off of the roadway. We are having some minor drainage work done here. Um, we are reconfiguring some of the driveways, specifically down on the, on the east side where the store and the two for Brickfire are. This will be basically a one-way in and out, and as you can see, the connector here that, that goes into the Brickfire project. So it's a five-foot wide sidewalk, um, trying to think of anything else that I'm forgetting. Um, we have a local contractor, Groundstone Construction, uh, gave us the lowest quote for that. It was around forty-eight thousand dollars. He's done a lot of sidewalk projects and other types of concrete projects for here, for us here in town. Um, and he does, he does really good work. He's very familiar with what our standards and the A D A standards are. So, uh, we recommend, recommend approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kent. Any questions to Mr. Kent? Do I have a, yes, Alderman Vaughn?
Yeah, well, thank you so much, because we've been dealing with this for about two or three years, and we have about, about four or five A D A, um, mobiles that runs up, up and down the street that really have a, a way. So we looked at many different options, but a lot of the options were too expensive, and then just, if you came down on the right side where the, where the, um,
Housing Authority?
Where the apartment or the housing authority, well, you had ten, had twelve driveways, so that wouldn't have worked. So that's what made us go to the opposite side. And mad with Ben, as I said, I consider the approval of the Westside Drive project, accepting the low quote from, from Groundstone Construction in the amount of forty-eight thousand nine hundred forty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Vaughn. I have a, I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Alderman Walker. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, unanimous. All right, we have one remaining item that was removed from consent, which is a consideration of approving the summary change order number one for the Lynn Lane widening project in the amount of twenty-seven thousand seven thirty-three thirty.
Blue approval.
I have a motion from Alderman Walker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrum. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of five, no, four to, four to one, motion carries. All right, and that conclude, oop, no, I'm sorry, we have a claim socket, I apologize. I think we need to pay the bills. Okay. Do I have a motion for a claim socket?
Remember.
I have a motion from Alderman Sistrum. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Walker. Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. Nay.
All right, by a vote of three to two, motion carries. All right, we have, that concludes our, that concludes our regular agenda. We have no executive session, so there will be a work session with the mayor and board of Alderman on Friday, May the thirty-first, twenty nineteen. At twelve P M., the city's, Starville City Hall, located on one-ten west, West Main Street, second floor conference room, Republican media are invited to attend. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a motion from Alderman Walker to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Second from Alderman Little. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good, we're in adjournment. Four of them. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your attendance.